You can just sit right there and run it if you want.
That's fine. It's still going on the cane. Call the meeting over. Since everybody is here except the mayor, we can do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Then he can take over. Let's get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. First and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved and passed. We got new microphones. You'll come in really clear. We need a motion to approve the April first meeting prior to the meeting that we already approved. Got first and the second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. And now the mayor can take over.
Alright, the special meeting, April first. And motion, the second. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill's in between a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Do you have any questions or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I actually got a question. This fifty thousand escrow to purchase Evans Plunge's Southern Hills title. I thought the way the contract was, we weren't gonna pay anything until the contract was hammered out.
To do the escrow, you have to transfer from Frenchu and Friends. The sales agreement had to go into the name of the city for us to negotiate. And to do that, we had to pay them back and reimburse the escrow for fifty thousand dollars to carry through.
It's not the way that Harley explained it to us.
If, I'm telling you how it does go though Wes, you had a question on. If the sale does not go through, the city gets that money back from the escrow.
I realize that, but who authorized the fifty thousand?
Well, I think the citizens did when they said, "Go ahead and vote for it." And they said yes.
After the contract was finalized.
That would be the purchase, but in order to negotiate in good faith, we've gotta have some money down.
You wanna read that thing, Harley?
The purchase agreement that was entered into by the LLC and Black Hills Healy Waters put up the initial fifty thousand and that agreement was signed in January. The clause that Wes is referring to, this agreement is to be ratified by the Hot Springs City Council on or before January twenty-second, 2013. That was back when we were having the initial discussions. If not ratified, this purchase agreement shall continue to May one of 2013. Upon council approval and prior to May one, a written agreement shall be consummated between the buyer and Evans Plunge Inc. establishing all ongoing parameters of operation, including training, maintenance, income, expenses, allocation of assets, promotion, marketing, retail inventory, earnest money, and general operations. Period. This agreement will be signed on or before May one, 2013, or this purchase agreement will be terminated. It is understood that the escrow money, Exhibit A, will be replaced by buyer escrow funds at the time of signing the agreement on or before May one of 2013, and that's what Wes is referring to. And then SGDWF LLC escrow funds are held at Southern Hills Title. Seller has the right to continue to market the property and take backup offers, which there were no backup offers ever submitted.
So when that was transferred over to the city, that was the on or before May one to pay the escrow. Am I correct, Harley? It seems, it sounds a little ambiguous with concern to it.
It's probably an attorney question, so I'll get accused of practicing law without a license again here, but I think you're both right because it says that in the purchase agreement, but you cannot negotiate in good faith as the city without having this purchase agreement assigned to you. I guess the interpretation would be, when it refers to agreement in the part that I read, does that mean the purchase agreement, or does that mean the final agreement for purchase? Assignment to this agreement, or the actual final agreement at the end?
To assign, to assign the agreement over to the city, the fifty thousand was paid back to the LLC and the city submitted funds to replace it in the escrow account until the finalization of the negotiations with concern to the plunge.
Which put the city in the driver's seat to the negotiation, where we were not the party until that time.
That's correct. Otherwise, we would have to go through the LLC and we aren't gonna do that. The public gave us the go-ahead on the twenty-sixth, when they voted that we were to go ahead and purchase at not more than one point nine million. That's the explanation I have.
Now, do you think it should be clarified?
Well, I haven't seen this or even heard it until now, so it's normal to have escrow monies, that's true, but whether we should ratify the agreement and then do the money would be a question that I don't have.
And that's what Wes is saying, this way.
Wouldn't be the time to upset the apple cart on the agreement? Because a new agreement could be worse.
We need this to go forward the way it is because there are specifics in the agreement that give us leverage to work with.
In addition to what I read here.
In addition to what you read.
Of that agreement, I just read one section of that purchase agreement.
Are you satisfied with the explanation?
The Realtor felt very uncomfortable with the plunge talking to and dealing with us if we didn't have our name on the line. Any other questions on the, those in between? Got a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Current claim, sixty-two thousand, fifty-two dollars. Got a motion to approve.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? Got a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Communication from the public, anybody wish to be heard at this time?
I'd just like to say that I thought the guys did a pretty good job of moving snow in this last storm. With the amount of snow that we got, I think they did a hell of a good job. I'd just like to make that part of that.
Thanks.
And I agree, they did do a good job.
Any other communication from the public?
I just had one big cultural rec net before we had a talent show down here, but I was gonna tell you guys, when you guys were talking about improvements down here during the talent show, I noticed there's a baby changing station. I don't know about the men's restroom, but there is a baby's restroom. So people are bringing their babies, perhaps the woman I saw was laying diapers on the floor, baby on, changing. So that would be something considered for restrooms down there.
Thank you. Any other communication from the public?
We're three weeks past the election. Where are negotiations with the plunge?
Yellow and white.
Well, you don't have it on the agenda for approval tonight. You don't have another meeting before May first. Do you expect a purchase agreement to be in place before May first?
Yes, we do.
So you'll be having a special meeting then to ratify that? Do you expect to?
Could be.
If we come to an agreement, we'll probably have to have a special meeting.
And you expect that before May first? You're far enough along that you feel good about saying this?
Is this gonna be run under the old Parks and Recreation Board that runs the golf carts and stuff?
We don't know right now.
Are you gonna try and get another one set up?
We don't have the new Parks and Recreation Board ordinance in place, so we don't know right now. We'll just hire a manager similar to the golf course. Or if we'll run it through that same work, we don't know yet. Any other communication from the public?
Talked to John Becker today. With the Harbin Transportation. He's the airport construction manager. And just to update some of the process that's gonna be going on at the airport in the future. He was out here last week to look at the runway. Nothing's gonna be done this year. He said it was okay. Next year, they plan on doing a rejuvenator to the whole runway and re-strengthen. And also in 2014, be doing the taxiway design. It's been put on hold, taxiways. If that's just for the design of it, then taxiways will be constructed in 2015. 2016, they have no projects. And they would have a meeting sometime with airport management and probably Tracy and Harley, whoever, you know, this summer, July or September. I don't, sooner or better, so we're working on budgets. We'll keep going by when that's gonna happen, that meeting.
Alright. Thanks. Any other communication from the public? Ordinances, we've got the water code first reading. And Dwight, did you wanna hold on from that?
Yeah, I wanna table this down under a couple changes that a attorney wants us to make. And another item that come up that we need to hash out in committee. So I'll make a motion, we table it.
Got a motion and a second to table until the next meeting? Is that right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Okay, resolutions, we've got one on the code of conduct. I think that's yours, Carl.
New joke, Carl.
A motion by Carl to pass the resolution for the code of conduct. Have second, second, Georgia, discussion or questions? Seeing none, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no.
No.
Let's do a, let's do a roll call, so we know.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bart Romi?
No.
Burris?
No.
Grimes?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
No.
Romi?
No.
Winia?
Yes.
Those five, three.
Okay. Got two appointments I'd like to. Affirm to the library board, Jane Farrell and Larry Maury for three air turns. Got a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion, the second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Couple personnel items on your agenda, you can see those. Old business at the city cleanup. Is that yours again?
Yeah. Just wanted to let everybody know that we will be taking tires and computers and TVs at the cleanup starting the week of April twenty-ninth through May third. And everybody in committee would like to make sure, or put the word out that we don't want the tire shops dropping off all their tires. They can take them to Edgemont and dump them for free. So this is just for general public to dump the tires on.
I think Ed wants, May one through May fifteen, I think is what he, they're taking tires at no charge.
Is there a, is there a limit? What if the tire people take? It's an area of what?
Like this, I don't understand your question.
Like if the tire businesses, and they live in Hunter, they take their old tires to the residents, then you can't hang them, instead of the resident putting the tires?
Well, I guess they'll get a couple reloads.
So that's why?
But we're just asking people to use common sense. Tire shop, you can run your big truck to Edgemont and get rid of them all.
Tire shops usually charge you per tire per disposal, so it is really considered a fair last half a whole of those.
And it's still the two pickup trucks?
Two, two pickup loads.
Can you mention computers, televisions, that just all electronics are used by?
I think all electronics.
Yeah, last time, we couldn't take any TVs and there was a couple computer monitors that came in and at that point, we weren't weren't able to take them, but we figured out a way to get that back.
These items will need to be separated.
Thanks Dwight. New business, we'd like to have approval to advertise for manager at Evans Plunge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, the second. Discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. And approval for Scott to go to a code enforcement conference in Pierre, May eighth to ninth. Got a motion to approve.
Motion.
Discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. And we have a temporary alcohol favors license application for the winter circle on April twentieth at the Red Rock for a wedding. Got a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. And we need approval for Scott to apply for the annual sidewalk occupancy permit. This is through DOT.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, the second. Discussion or questions?
How, how far out can businesses use the sidewalk? I mean, like next to city hall, this guy that parks at Harley out on the sidewalk and stuff, things up at the sidewalk. Do they have a circuit board that they can use?
Yeah, it's not what they can use. They have to leave between the street and where the stuff is. And right now, I don't know what that is. I think it's like four or five feet. But I don't remember correctly.
Is it, is it right then that if somebody wants to use the sidewalk, they get permission from the city because the city has to permit that?
Right. The city works with the state and then we allow businesses to do it. I have a motion, the second. More discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. And the glider hangar, Craig, is that yours?
Yeah. We talked about this at the last airport meeting. And we have enough gliders, from my understanding from Harley, that will rent this hangar if we build it. And they'll pay five hundred dollars a month. And sign the contract for five years, they'll pay it off.
Six hundred.
Six hundred a month. And sign the contract for five years, they'll pay it off. And we don't know the exact price, it'll probably be around twenty-five thousand, give or take. I'm sure what I put up. Here it gave us a, a quantity cost for the material, but you know, that changes right now daily, the long storm. It might be different when we build. I make a motion that we put this hangar up.
A second.
This will be over next to the fast, where you guys were talking about originally?
In that area. So I have got the good GPS coordinates where both areas are gonna be, so send them to this John Becker so he can prove clearance.
So it does take FAA approval? At least state, state air not gonna, and probably if it goes by what the FAA has, the engineers have to work it out.
Basically bring a free hangar on the hill.
Hopefully, yeah.
Post frame building? Gravel floor or?
Right now, just grass.
Grass. They didn't want, they didn't want concrete or gravel.
No electricity in the building or nothing?
At later date, if they ever move out, we'll try to build it so that the gliders are not using it. Fixed wing powered craft can still fit in there and work with it. At that time, we could talk about putting the floor in or doors or whatever, but this is pretty much a shell.
I have a question for you. Is there a difference in height that's required for?
Yeah, they don't need a very tall one, but we're wanting to build it tall enough for a tail to go in on a tricycle gear.
And about what that, what is that height on the?
I think we shattered it a lot.
We priced it at twelve, but then there's been talk of going to fourteen to fit a taller airplane. And that is taking consideration of possibly putting gravel or, or cement here in the future, right? You'd probably have to dig the floor out and then put cement in, put a good base down.
Okay, any other discussion?
Is this a motion to actually build it or to go for bids?
It's a motion to build. Motion is to actually build the hangar.
Go out for proposals to build it, yeah.
Go out for bids.
Go out for bids.
Yeah, two bids, first step.
Then you'll bring a bid and the others, I mean, if they're too high, you're not gonna build it, so.
I see, it's a motion to bid. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse no. Bond schedule, Craig.
That's, that's my problem.
Okay.
I'll try to explain it, but she can probably do it later.
When we change the criminal or traffic board notices, then I need to update so the numbers match and I, I hadn't done that and I got it Friday and I haven't done it yet, but I will do it that I know, Craig. You know what I mean? Because when the when Bob or one of his people writes a ticket, then, and it goes up, goes through the process and ends up the courthouse. If they look up the statute, we want to have the right number with the right thing. I'm the one that's trying to be embarrassed if we don't, so I'd really like to do it so I can get it right or be embarrassed. So I will have it next time.
Thanks Carl. Commander of words, did you have anything, Carl?
No, sir.
Anything from Dwight?
No.
Okay. Tell the safety, Craig.
We had a short meeting. I was the only one there. I mean, there was a few others. Harley wasn't there and Dave was
Out of state.
Out of state, driving home. We talked about through streets and, and I talked to the mayor today and Dave and I was gonna give with him and discuss the through streets, we don't have a day yet. Condemnations, I went over those, we from what I understand, we're gonna condemn one of the buildings. And we talked about another one. Glider hangar, we just voted on that. And airport lease land, we don't know about yet.
That's coming up later tonight.
In executive session. That's all I have on.
Okay. Cultural recreation?
Yeah, I've got, got a few things here. Well, seeing how we're talking about the Mueller Center, we're gonna Chris is looking up about the cost of a dishwasher and I was talking to one business in town that possibly has a popcorn machine, so we're just looking at that. We're forgetting about the hot dog thing for a little bit. Library, the library is doing really good. And then they were talking, we were talking about sprinklers behind Brookside. The Brookside Park. We don't know what happened to these sprinklers that were anticipated to be cleared.
You know about that? There's no water.
I think there are, there's that hydrant back there. There's an old hydrant back there that the water was supposed to be running when they put that new water.
No, the water line broke in the middle. They was gonna dig a new one down alley, but we never did.
They've got that on their list of work.
To, to work on that and then sprinklers and a few other parts. And then we gotta start looking at building a soccer field for the big kids up at Butler Park. Because we're going through with some of the other things like the RV dump. So now we gotta do it, start looking into building the the soccer field up at Butler Park. And that's just about what I got. You got anything more that you wanna add to this? Okay, that's it.
Don, I got, I forgot something. George, was that?
Oh, yeah.
George was there, not, I mean, even knowing what else, Don, George was there.
Thanks, Joe. Harley, oh, sorry about.
When you guys are discussing the through streets, that could be a public meeting. I have some other committees that will ask you about.
Yeah, be at the committee meeting. We don't know when. We'll have a date, we'll post that, we'll post that at city hall. Harley?
I just noticed that the municipal school joint election will be held on June fourth. We have Miller and Romi on Ward one as far as the city's concerned. They're the only city issues that we have. The school will have three people for two positions. Bossert, Romi. Yeah, not a different Romi. Sharon's Romi and Anoz. Two of those three would be voted on, so anybody in Ward two, three, and four would be voting for school only. It is a joint election, so we'll be working closely with the school and having all of the ballots count together on June fourth. Of that election. Words for the city will be here at the Mueller Center. Again, it's just one ward, Ward one will be down here as well as the school, only for those that are accustomed to the city that can only vote for the school. So everything I have is clear?
I don't have anything tonight, it's too hard to talk.
Scott did wonder about the permit for DOT for the entrance signs, whether we should go forward with getting that permit or not.
I signed the applications today so if we can get the sponsor approved. then I'll bring it back and show to the council what they approved.
The bid group, as well as the city, have budgeted for entrance signs coming in to Hot Springs in three different locations. If the bids come in right, we can get all three of them at one time.
Okay, if there's nothing else.
Motion going to executive session.
I have a motion the second, going to executive session for legal matters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.